For all that you do, I pray that you'd bless each one here today and we just pray that you'd bless our town, Lord, and thank you for what you do and just guide and direct us tonight in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You've got public comment in both of these, I understand, if we're item number one, so we'll wait till item number one, if that's okay? Okay. All right. Approved minutes of the October 18th and October 25th meeting. We've got a copy of those in front of you, entertain a motion when you're ready. I noticed that Ben and Zach were absent in the 25th meeting.
That was at GLO meeting?
I'm going to approve minutes of both seconds. I'm sorry. How you taking that?
Second. Got a motion from Richard to approve the October 18th and October 25th meeting, second from Cecil. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed same sign. Motion carries. Financial report. Looking good.
You want to astound me. I don't know any other word for it, but it's awesome. It's just, we weren't expecting this to continue, so this is good news.
Keep it up.
We'll try our best.
Keep it up.
This, this is your September financial packet, but I should have put preliminary on there because I'm working on audit stuff right now and making a few changes here and there, so.
Okay.
It shouldn't change too greatly, but a few line items are going to change with some of the adjustments that I'm making.
Looking good. Anything, any other questions for Leslie? Eastern Chamber of Commerce Information by Ms. Hobbs. Ms. Hobbs?
I'll stand up for just a second. Oh, no, I'm, I'm.
Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you. Alrighty, so very plain here, I think that should be in your packet, everything that we're going to discuss, and the first item is Richard's cook-off Saturday, April 9, 2022. And I know that we talked about, you just wanted me to present all of this and then y'all could take action possibly next month or think about what action needs to be taken. And we want to put the tent up past the alleyway, just like we had asked for in 2019, or 2020, sorry, excuse me. We really wanted to do this and all of this was approved, however, due to COVID, we didn't even have an event that year. And we were going to have the wine festival under the big tent and ask for ordinance, or the variance for a certain area, and that is marked off in your map, but I think is connected. And you've got the big tent down past the alley on Mulberry, sorry, that's Mulberry and Commerce Street. And then where all the red is would be the variance for the wine to be allowed to be walked around. The big thing with that is if the cooks come in, they get to visit the wine festival for a minute or two, they can walk around, grab a glass of wine and go back to their tent. And of course with this, last year we had also said no bottles, we just didn't want it to be, no bottles, kegs, things like that. We didn't want it to be a big drinking festival. We just wanted our wine to be able to be carried around and then enjoy that part of it. And so that's what we're looking at for the cook-off. Do you all have any questions for me on that?
Yes, the big tent is going to be right in front of the First Christian Church, is that correct?
No, sir. And this is the alleyway on Commerce Street, so it would be where Pamela Chaney's building used to be. And.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Yes. And we should be within plenty of feet away from, I believe, Christian Church. Last year, this is where we had originally said to put it, and away from First United Methodist Church. We should be far enough away from both of those front doors of the church. And of course, we can go back and look at that and for, you know, next month to look at that if for some reason it's not far, too far, and maybe making the placement different for the tent. The main reason why we wanted the tent in that area is if you put it where it used to be for the cook-off, kind of in front of the big tent or in front of the stage of the courthouse, we lose a lot of vendor places that get regularly filled up. And also those have electric spots over there where this back here does not, and we don't almost ever put vendors that far back. So we'd rather not lose our vendor space.
You get electricity for the tent?
Yes, into the alley.
Okay, yeah, that's right.
Yes, sir. But you can't run, you know, individual vendors off that far.
Yeah, yeah.
How's your response been for this year's festival?
Pretty good. Talking about.
Barbecue and, yeah, barbecue and the wine.
A lot of people were looking forward to it in 2020, and when we did not do it this year, there was a bunch of people that were disappointed. So a bunch of people were like, wait, I thought we were going to get to have wine, you know, the cooks thought we were going to have the wine. Because that's what their wives do.
Your old rip, old rip and wine vendors are looking to come back for this?
Yes, yes. And we'll have more. And the biggest issue with the Rip Fest thing was it was kind of a, it really was a last-minute planning, I won't even lie on that. We only had about three months to plan it. I know for most people, three months seems like a long time to plan something, it is not. We plan things a year in advance. That's why I'm coming to you guys now for next year's Rip Fest, we can go ahead and start planning things. The quicker I get a wine festival on our books, they'll come to our event versus other things. We had an issue this year, we only had, ended up with three wineries. We had one that had to cancel due to them having other things, so. That was our big issue. Staffing is an issue with win, wineries, just like everywhere, so they'll pick one and that's all they're going to.
I'm, I'm not opposed to this, but I do have a question about it. Is the, does state law set that thousand-foot distance?
When it comes to schools, the distance required is a thousand. Property line to property line. When we're talking about churches, anything other than an ISD, then it's 300 feet from doorway to doorway along the right-of-way. So you can't cut across, you have to go out to the sidewalk, down along the right-of-way and cut across.
Okay, because I just don't want us to be doing anything in violation of state law.
Yes, sir.
First my question.
Yes, sir.
Well, we'll, we need to, do we need to make sure that, that we have that required distance to the First United Methodist Church, because that is the closest.
Well, and I apologize that I don't have this, this in front of me and I haven't, I haven't seen this. Where, where are we talking about putting this currently?
Well, we can, we can resolve that in December, when we put this on the agenda to vote for it. That's what, this is really information and we'll clear those hurdles and, and be ready to vote and take action in December. As she stated, this is an information only right now.
I know that the, the building that Lisa Benson has there on Lamar is perfectly, just a little over 300 feet away when we were, when we were doing our dimensions, so we can look at this again and make sure that we have it in compliance, so there's no problem.
And that on the square is about 300, and this one's going to be a block closer to the church?
Well, and that, yeah, we can take a look at it and verify, because I'm, I'm just going off of what I can best remember when we were taking a look at it. I want to make sure that whatever I have, I have it exact.
And this is not as the crow, 300 feet is measured again down the property lines?
It's, it's along the right-of-way.
Not, not as the crow flies?
No, that is with ISD property and that's property line to property line. That's the thousand-feet one. 300 is along the right-of-way.
Property line to property line or doorway to doorway?
Property line to property line.
On ISDs.
On ISDs.
On ISDs.
Yes, sir.
Doorway to doorway on this.
Correct, sir.
Or doorway to tentway.
Yes, sir. And we may put the insulator tent back.
Now we got to put a door on the tent so we can measure it.
Clear that out.
But no, when it comes time to setting up.
Yes, on the opposite side.
Do what?
When it comes time to set it up, we can definitely verify and make sure.
Well, we need to know when we put on the agenda in December, we need to have that answer so we can know.
Yes, sir, we'll make sure we have it for you.
What hurdle clear?
I have a question, or, or Ms. Hobbs?
Oh, no.
We were supposed to know that they got their wine from the winery.
That's where the variance comes in on the open consumption. We're just going to ask it not to have open bottles, or open beer bottles and kegs and things like that, but I mean, that's kind of the variance, it's what we had discussed previously. If you bring your own bottle on and pour in your own glass, I mean, just kind of the same as if they had a red solo cup.
I thought y'all were doing, when you did this a couple of years ago, y'all provided the cups that we're supposed to be using or something?
We did, we did for the wineries.
Why are you not doing that now?
We would, we'll still provide the cups that they'll drink within the wineries, but it's just kind of like, in, like I said in previous, like he said, how do we know they're drinking that wine?
Okay, but they still got to have the proper cup?
Yes, yes, but I mean, like if someone, like for now, allegedly, if someone's walking around with a red solo cup and they're not acting ridiculous, we don't stop them and ask them what's in their cup? If that makes sense.
She keeps saying we, she's being mean.
Yeah. Now defined ridiculous.
We don't either, though. Like, we don't walk around and go, what are you drinking in your, you know, your cup? We kind of, you know, that's kind of the variance. It'll be a fun day, but we want to keep people in line still. And we've never had an issue in years past of anyone acting crazy, and we've had the wine festival before. Most people that attend the wine festival are very, you know, you, you get a little bit of a different demographic that are going to attend a wine festival. Normally it's the wives, I won't lie, of the cooks. Their wives are enjoying wine, they shop, and the more wine they drink, the more money they spend. So we really, we really like.
We're really encouraging them to get drunk, that's good.
Anything else? When we had total prohibition against alcoholic beverages, possession of alcoholic beverages in a public place, the total prohibition seemed to have worked somewhat, but if we, if we allow alcoholic beverages of any type, then that's going to encourage the other type as well. I mean, always at, at the cook-off, we always have two to three trash barrels full of cans of Coke, cans of bottles of beer. And so it's, I mean, it goes on as long as it's not causing a problem for the man over here, but I think that, I think that once we say yes, alcoholic beverages of this type are okay, then everybody's going to assume that it's why.
Well, I don't drink, so this, this is immaterial to me, but we, you start messing with a T, there's no problem, but we, we in the past have allowed this and it's been successful, it's been peaceful, it's been well-attended for the most part, and well-behaved. Our agreement was the first time we did. As long as that maintains, we maintain that due order, we can live with it. But the wheels ever come off, then it's done. That's been our policy in the past. And we'll discuss that again in December again. We, I don't want us to keep going down this path and having deliberation and discussion. I know we're not voting on anything, but let's get it on the agenda where we can actually make decisions and do things and go. We know where all of us are, it's a cautious plan and we know where we've been in the past and so far it's been successful.
Only other thing on mine was the carnival approval for Rip Fest next year, so I can start looking for one. This year it was of course approved for us to have one for the 2021 Rip Fest, but with state fair and some of those other things and Abilene getting held over an extra weekend, they obviously weren't going to pack up in Abilene and come to Eastland or Fort Worth and come to Eastland, unfortunately. So there wasn't a carnival to be had, unfortunately, but I would like to obtain city approval, of course, for that again in December, look at that again. First Baptist Church was open to having it in there, and so was the Eastland Memorial Hospital, open fill with, you know, they had their own guidelines of, we had to have liability insurance, we did, and then also whoever was coming in had to have that as well and provide that and name them as an insured. So I mean, as far as the city goes, the reason we had to have approvals, because if we do it in that parking lot or even in the empty fill, it's still close to a quote-unquote business. And I believe that the ordinance for Eastland was 300 feet for commercial and like a thousand for residential. And so we had that approved for just that one day, or for Thursday through Saturday is what we had talked about doing. And they had to be moved out and completely off those properties by Sunday for parking purposes for the churches. So that's what we were looking at there. And then the barricades, which I know, I know, on the barricades, they were great and they're good to have, and especially because the one year that we did have the lady that I guess decided to run through our tent, that was that back in 2000, I don't remember, that was when you were there?
Back in the 2000 days.
Yes. The biggest issue we had with the barricades this year was the fact that I know that you don't want people to drive through them, that's the whole point of having the barricades up. But there was one point of entry and that made it really, really hard when we have 120 vendors all setting up right around the same time. There was one point of entry and one point of exit. I have huge trailers coming in, 30-foot trailers that are parking. A lot of times we set those on corners for that particular reason, so they can pull right up, park their trailer, undo their truck and go. That wasn't a possibility this year, so they're trying to back up these big trailers around tents. I was very happy we did not have a wreck or anyone hurt, but it was really scary at some points. Our chamber tent became a roundabout of vehicles just circling, trying to get, figure out how they were going to get out. I don't know what the final answer to that is. I know it'd be hard to put them up right beforehand, right before the event, because we do have setup, you know, the night before and the morning of, but it did kind of make for mass chaos the morning of. A lot of people didn't set up the night before because of rain, so then that morning, they're all coming in in droves.
With some gum and chain across the two, where's the gate, they can move the chain, undo the chain. Have a bolt on top of it.
We'll work on that.
We'll work on that. I mean, but I mean, like we, the reason we got them, our main goal is for our citizens and people who come in this town to be safe.
Of course, yes.
And only fix that one.
Each time you ask for barricade, you need to be specific.
Ask for barricades. Alright, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Lord, appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Thank you, King of the Lord.
Public hearing on annexation. We will have that hearing now. We've opened that meeting at 6:17 or 6:16, I guess that says. Public hearing on the annexation, and that is item number one. We need to tell what that is, or is that?
You're just your public hearing and then the actual agenda item, the one that's down here. We're just doing, Mr. Hanson with EMH Cattle and the Maverick Town Homes are here, they're in the back. Do you have any questions? He's here to answer them. And up on the screen, and you do have a map in the back of your packet, the green is where the Town Homes are now, and the red is at 4.73 acres that he's asking to be brought into the city limits.
Anybody have any information you want to share with that? If y'all, I think it's pretty clear what you guys are doing and what you've done already. We appreciate that, it's been very successful so far evidently, because you're trying to double what you've got, so that's a great plan. Any, anybody have anything? Close this public hearing at 6:18. All right. The Board of City Commissioners discuss and take action on the following agenda item, discussion and consideration of planning zoning case 21-009. Applicant Kathy Marler is requesting to rezone her property located 305 South Hillcrest, lot 22-4, block 2, Hillcrest Edition, Eastland, Texas, from single-family zone district to multi-manufactured home zoning district in order to place a new manufactured home where the manufactured home currently exists. In other words, replace their current home is what they're trying to do.
So with this property, they are requesting to. Family zoning, which is what it was zoned back in 2007, to manufactured home. There are 17 properties that are within the 200-foot radius with 13 owners. Sent the letters out to 13 owners, received two, four responses and one response that was against. That came in late last week. This is the property as it currently sits, this is one that Terry has had to work previously before Ms. Marler recently picked up this property. That is the current home that sits on the property, as you can see, it's in a fairly dilapidated state.
Is that a manufactured home?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so a manufactured home was already there, but then it got zoned after the fact?
Yes, sir.
So it was grandfathered in?
Yes, sir. So that one was grandfathered in like this, but as you can see, the, the home is not in a, in a state really where somebody would want to move into it. To show you here, this is the, the property there on Hillcrest. These are the properties that were, were within the 200-foot radius of this property. And here you can see the zoning, the, the manufactured home zoning is right behind them, behind the alleyway. With this property, as I said, Terry has been working this property quite a bit code enforcement-wise. Trash, litter, debris, there were junk vehicles, there were hobbies and grass, and then this building just sitting in the state, and the, the individuals that have been, he's been dealing with before decided to put it up for sale because they didn't have a way to, to take care of it, from what I'm understanding. And so Ms. Marler purchased it and she has plans to move a brand-new manufactured home into the site and also take care of the property. One of the things, the only reason why the existing home is still there is because she's currently working with Atmos as far as taking care of some gas lines that are currently still on the property. They're going to put some new lines in for a new home if this gets passed. And she actually talked with James Doyle last week at the P&amp;Z meeting, he, he was made aware of the issue she was still having, and so he's actually expediting that for her to try to get that taken care of so they can improve the property. So the staff recommendation for this property is to, we, we have no objection with the rezone as requested, and as we said, this, this being an issue with code enforcement, we believe Ms. Marler with her plans are going to be able to take this off of, out of our hair and make serious improvements to the property and, and keep it up to code and we're going to have to worry about it anymore.
Are there any other manufactured homes there on Hillcrest in that area?
I believe there are some farther down.
Like toward Broner Jackson's house?
Back to the north from what I believe, and I'm saying, and, and you know, we have some back on the backside of it, so, yeah.
And those are grandfathered in, I guess?
Yeah, if they're, if, in that single-family zoning, yeah, they're, they're, everything that's out there would be grandfathered in, yes.
And that is the hole you?
Mr. Doyle, somebody got ahold of me and, and said that I can now get the, they're not going to pull the meter like they first told me, but they did say I could remove those, the existing pipes, can be, go ahead. They said it was definitely, the gas line was dead, which that's what I was waiting on to make sure before I proceed to, you know, evacuate everything, that the, the gas lines wasn't going to cause a problem.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, right, y'all were going in there basically having the whole lot cleared off and starting from scratch, right?
Yes, it's got some holes or pits or something in it, and he, they're going to excavate, make it all level and leave the existing trees, but take out that house, yeah.
Yes.
You said there was one dissent against, but he didn't list why.
Yeah, correct. He did, he did not list why, he just said that he didn't, he was against it, and it also came very late. The two fours were able to make it for the planning and zoning meeting.
Okay.
But this, this against showed up like Thursday or Friday of last week.
Yeah, I think it's.
I move to approve 21-881.
Second.
Got a motion from Richard and a second from Zach to approve ordinance, which is item number two, 21-881. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And you not want to do number one first?
Well, I, I ask a question about what do we need to approve in number one?
I think number one is, should actually be just a hearing.
That you agree to, to rezone it.
Well, so we got to agree to rezone it?
Then go to the ordinance.
And then approve the ordinance. Okay.
Okay, well, we just voted that we want, want to proceed, right?
I move we rezone it then.
And I'll, I'll second that. That's, that's the ordinance.
Well. No, you're just, you're just.
There are two separate items. One item is to approve.
Right.
The rezone from P&amp;Z.
Well, didn't we just approve it?
Well, that's what we're going to complete, and then once that is completed and voted on, because we haven't voted on that yet.
What did we just vote on?
The P and, you basically said P&amp;Z, we agree with you and, yes.
And the second one is the ordinance that's officially changed.
Right, right, yes. Well, in my eyes, we, we just agreed to, we just voted and we all agreed the P&amp;Z case.
Right, but the issue was, is that I believe, remember, Richard made his motion, he made it for item two and not for item one. And she's wanting to have it cleared up, so we follow the process and we don't have to come back on this again.
I'll change my.
So do we need to do number one first?
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve the P&amp;Z case 21-009.
I'll second that.
Richard's made a motion to approve planning and zoning case 21-009, and Zach has made a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we've got a, on the floor, or to discuss, our 21-881. Entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the first reading of ordinance 21-881.
Motion from Zach to approve the first reading of ordinance 21-881.
Second.
Who was that, Ben?
Yes.
Second from Ben. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Congratulations.
You made that hard, didn't you?
The ordinance will have to go through a second reading next month and then.
Turn it inside out, dude.
For the second reading, you're not required to be here, because I believe they have a good grasp on everything.
Yeah, you can tell we do.
After the second reading, you'll be able to read.
That's funny.
Holy cow. All right, I'm room three, discuss consideration of resolution 2021-16, a resolution approving a grant agreement in the amount of $405,000 with a local match of $45,000 and NESCOR agreement relating thereto, authorizing the mayor, city manager and city secretary or the designated to execute any and all documents relating thereto and other matters in connection therewith. Did an attorney write that?
Yes. Yes, that is, that came from their attorneys.
Their attorneys.
Basically, this is that FIF grant, the hydrology study that will go hand-in-hand with that $10 million, $10 million GLO grant. This is just the study of how all the water moves. We have the $45,000, which we budgeted because we knew it was going to come into play this year. The contract is stated, and I'm hoping tomorrow that we'll get in to this a little bit during our meeting on how everything's going to work in the timeline.
Well, how much is this grant for?
405.
405.
What's the match?
45.
What percent?
That is 12%. Yes.
It is?
45, no.
405, 45.
I figured, I figured the 450 grand and we got 10% would be 405.
But this is, this, when they sent us this.
11.1.
Huh?
11.
11, yeah.
Okay, I, I want us to do this right, and I've really got a question about if this is a 405 or a 450. It's a 450 with a 10% match, I think.
All the paperwork they have been sending us is 405 for this.
And our match is 45. So we'll throw the percentage out to when it comes.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to.
Yes.
405, 45.
That's why, that's why I'm going, I, that's why I circle those and going, this is not.
No, agree 100%.
I think this is a $450,000 grant, and I, if they stay the way they want us to approve it, that's fine, but I think we all need to be aware that that's goofy.
I move to approve resolution 2021-16.
Motion from Cecil.
Second.
Second from Richard to approve resolution 2021-16. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Discuss consideration of resolution twenty-two-one dash seventeen. Resolution, a resolution supporting in its entirety and hereby adopts the allocation method for opioid settlement proceeds as set forth in the state of Texas, the Texas Civil Subdivision Opioid Abatement Fund Council and Settlement Allocation Terms Sheet.
Uh, as we know, we've had an opioid crisis going across America for the past several years, and Purdue Pharmacy was sued. Uh, we took part in that, uh, suit along with most state, uh, cities across and counties across the state of Texas. Suit was settled, and our portion of that is fifteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars. All the subsequent paperwork is paperwork we had to give y'all. Basically telling you how everything shook out.
Just a little bit of information.
Yeah. Little.
I read it all. Okay, entertaining motion?
So we've got an entertaining motion to receive the fifteen thousand dollars.
You're on sixteen thousand dollars.
I move that we pass resolution twenty-two-one dash seventeen.
A motion from Richard.
Second.
Second from Cecil to approve resolution twenty-two-one dash seventeen. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Number five, discuss consideration of first reading to approve ordinance twenty, twenty-one, approve ordinance twenty-one dash eight-eight-zero. An ordinance annexing the here and after described territory to the city of Easton, to Easton County, Texas, extending the boundary limits to said city to include said property wherein said city limits, to granting to all the inhabitants of said property all the rights and privileges of other citizens and binding and inhabitants by all the acts, ordinances, resolutions, and regulations of said city. And that is what we've just talked about a while ago.
In the public hearing, yes, sir.
Public hearing, the Maverick Town Homes and great work they've done.
Yeah.
They want to come in and we'd be glad to have them.
Yeah, we talked to Bobby, um, and we, we think it's going to be, we can get them city services with no issues. So, I mean, city does not see any reason not to do this.
I just want to thank everybody. The city's been great to work with. From the beginning, you guys called a special meeting, uh, for the U D C and the city council to get the phase one. A little nervous about the phase one, but we immediately went and built, built some other buildings. They're filling up as we're getting them done. It's very encouraging. That means the growth here is real. Uh, Tony's one of the best city official, uh, uh, building officials we've worked with anywhere. So, if you, I'll pay him later.
He'll pay you later.
Anyway, we've got it on public record. That's what, we've got to nail it now. I understand, I'm just curious if it's still true, that all of your renters up till recently probably are out of town type people that are moving to Eastland? Is that still a fairly valid comment?
Yes, sir. The last time I always spoke to the property manager about it, um, she said that we don't have a single resident in the, the first phase that was from Eastland. They're all from out of town, which just shows the man to get here.
Mm-hmm, your daughter moved out there?
Yep.
And I think that's part of the sales tax increase too.
Huh?
More people here.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, yeah, we, we're seeing that and that's, that's the barometer. And that's why we thank you for, thank you for being here and for making, making Eastland a better place. Appreciate that.
I approve, I move we approve twenty-one dash eight-eight ordinance.
Second.
A motion from Richard and a second from Zach to approve order twenty-one dash eight-eight-zero. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number six, discuss consideration to approve the, the award of a contract for the sewer lines along Highway six.
Okay, as y'all know, um, part of the wastewater treatment plant, um, bond package was to extend the sewer line from where Red Star is, which would be down here at this point, where that lift station is, bring it, bring it up Highway six. And that, that, we're all the way to, see where the green line at the very bottom is, that's where our sewer line goes to this point and it stops. With the funds that were unused from the wastewater treatment plant, we'll be able to complete the green section and pick up all those businesses, uh, on the left and the right or north, south, however you want to say it, or east, west, uh, side, and get them on city and offer them city services at this time. We do not have, the way the bids were written was the base bid was to complete the green section. The alternative, the alts, first alternative was to go orange, and the second alternative was to go all the way up to the yellow. Really, at the time, all we have the money left over to do is the base bid, which would be the green, and go just a little bit further, probably a couple hundred feet up, uh, into the orange. And, and that would, I guess, officially close out the wastewater treatment plant bond.
Is Red Star eventually going to be on su- on the city sewer?
Red Star's already on.
All right.
You beat me.
What, 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 the, the, the green line on the east side of the road exists. And what happens is where, where it come, will come across where the, where it crosses Highway six and pick up all those businesses and eventually bring them all the way up.
Well, what's confusing is there's nothing drawing the sewer line down to the Red Star.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Well, there is a sewer line there.
There is a sewer line already there because we have.
I was on my way to asking the same question.
Yes, sir.
You got there for it.
I apologize.
Oh, that's okay.
We have a manhole at the main sewer line that connects Red Star. That manhole's right there at the corner of, southwest corner of Jay's right there, right? And it doesn't trunk off to anything else.
So that the green goes all the way down.
Yes, sir.
So we can understand that better, but.
Yes, sir.
We're, we're down to Red Star now. How are we getting, if we don't have any green north of the green right there with the red and yellow, how is that sewer line connected back to the city?
How is the city, the sewer line connected that's currently existed? That sewer line runs, um, it runs in the ditch. Basically, it crosses, okay, it crosses over, it runs from Red Star up this way. And then it crosses over and comes back up the city. And there's a, as you make the curve coming into the city on Highway six, where that big pond and like there's a radio antenna, there is actually a manhole that sits in that field and runs across.
That's on the Fox property.
Yes, and then it runs across back, like runs across Highway six. And it goes through that field where, um, Mr., I can't recall the gentleman's name, but there's a pond out there. There's another manhole and it runs back up towards the sewer plant from there.
Yeah, that manhole is middle, in the middle of Bassett Street.
Yes, there is, there's actually, we actually have three manholes that sit in the middle of nowhere that all this ties into.
But you're going to get all this tied together with the money from the sewer plant?
Yes.
And once that's done, that money's spent and this will be complete?
Yes, we will, we will offer sewer city services to everybody in that corner, which opens up development, because we do offer city services. We do not offer anybody on that west side any city services.
And this will fix that?
Yes, this will fix that.
Okay.
The remaining funds is twenty-eight thousand?
That will be the remaining funds, uh, off the base bid. And with that twenty-eight thousand, we're going to instruct the contractor, you go as far as you can up there. Well, we'll get the green section done.
Right.
And then we will go into the orange just as far as we can.
Okay. Approve the award contract for the sewer, who we got, who we award the contract to? Uh, hidden, Tom?
Dorado.
I make a motion?
Yes, sir.
That we approve the award of the contract for the sewer lines along Highway six through Dorado Construction Group. This is Texas Water Development Board Clean Water State Revolving Funds, C W S R F, project number seventy-three, seven fifty-five dash C I D zero-two, remaining unused funds, R U F, and will be contingent upon approval by the Texas Water Development Board.
Second.
Motion from Cecil and a second from Ben. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Team manager briefing.
Okay. As you know, tomorrow we will have a meeting with G L O, Lanford, uh, and her group, Scott Hay, all the parties that have invested interest in this grant.
What time is it again?
At noon tomorrow.
Noon wherein?
Right here.
Okay.
Right here, um, and we, we should be covering, she sent over agenda late this afternoon. I can print you off if you want. And it looks like we're going over every aspect of what's going to take place in this grant.
Wow.
So, yeah, it's pretty in-depth. Um, so the paperwork on the F I F, uh, and the Highway six sewer projects. Yes.
So.
Uh, well, see, I, I had questions about, I've had questions.
Yeah.
Nobody can give you the right answer because it goes from here to this person, to this person, to this person, to this person, to this person. And what I was.
Well, it makes, it makes sense that usually it's a tw- a ten percent match.
Well, and my question was, when you send over the contract and it says four hundred and fifty thousand?
Well, I think if I tell them they sent it to us, we approved the four hundred and five thousand, well, well, forty thousand, you know. I mean, you get along with it. They just saved us four hundred, forty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah. I didn't, I mean. I know, I, I agree with you.
I know it's being picky, but it's not, it's not what it says and what they're, it's just not the same thing. An attorney wrote it, what can I say?
No, I mean, and that, that has been my question this whole time, and, you know, we, we get to talk to people on this level.
Yeah.
And I never can get to the person that can answer my question.
Well, it's interesting that the forty-five thousand plus four oh five equals four hundred and fifty thousand.
Well, that's my concern. It's a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. That's really what it is. I, I don't care how they say it. That's what it is. And we're doing forty-five thousand dollars. I just, we're actually getting four hundred and five and that's just, anyway, whatever.
Really, that's.
We're so glad it's finally getting done. We'll shut up and let them do it.
Yeah, exactly. Um, that's really all I have. I know it doesn't seem like a lot, but it's been a crazy month.
Well, we're finally moving forward with these grants that we've been waiting for, for a long, long time. What's scary about the grants is how much the, you know, what we planned on doing two or three years ago, and this is all bid and thought about and laid out, what we're going to actually be able to do because of the increased expenses and how the price of everything's going up. So it's going to be interesting to see, and I think we'll be having some meetings and talking about, uh, what direction we go and, and what priorities we're going to set up. Uh, I think that's going to be a decision we're going to end up making. I think it's up to us. We are re-prior, we're going to have to prioritize that lit about what we want to do and, and with the engineer's input. And he said, this is what it's going to do, and we've got to decide which way to go because we're going to run out of money. I've got to feed it. I, I can't imagine not running out of money, but it's still ten million dollars and this is four hundred and fifty that we can do something with, so praise the Lord. What else? That all for you?
I was just curious if there's any update on the Durapatcher.
The Durapatcher, yeah, uh, Leslie and I have got with the bank. We're waiting for them to come back with the figures. Uh, I'm writing up our bid package, which I have got the one quote, you know, and you're supposed to have three quotes. But getting people to send it back is what we're waiting on, so that's it. It should be here, well, we'll see. I'm not going to give a timeline. But yeah, we're moving forward with that as we speak.
The common, the common word would be that it's too cold right now to do anything, so it's okay. Okay, cold or blast?
Uh, hold on, so the, uh, the signal light here, so they're, they're, they do plan on putting a stoplight at both sides of I twenty on Main Street?
I, that's one, when I met with Tex Dot, yes. They're planning on both sides of twenty and possibly, possibly at Bankhead, doing something, reworking that whole intersection.
Hmm.
Because, you know, getting across, turning onto Bankhead.
Yeah.
Time them, right?
That's going to be a lot of lights.
Yeah, but I think they're going to have to re-engineer.
And it said the, that.
But that's.
The exit ramp will be a little closer to town than originally planned. Is, uh, what was the reasoning there, do you know?
The reasoning there was they're trying to avoid, if we put it where originally we wanted, way back there, there's some right-of-way issues and there's some safety issues about how they have to make that ramp come off. And that's a two-way.
Yeah.
Access road. They would have to shut that down and make it a one-way because they don't have the proper spacing to make that ramp come off and give you a chance to turn back.
Uh, how far closer, uh, do you have an idea of where they want to do it now?
Yeah, it will be close to the ground storage tank, right there.
Okay.
And we met with, we went down there and met with Tex Dot, uh, and we talked about that. The line of sight is actually better where they're wanting to put, uh, the exit ramp closer to town. Because when we came back from Brownwood meeting with those folks, we drove out there to look. And it's hard to see the signs of the businesses from way back there as opposed to.
Right.
So, yeah, in a perfect world, they put us one where the new one's going to go and our old, the ori- one original planned. We'll see.
They have a, is it, is this a twenty-two project?
Twenty-four, maybe.
Twenty-three.
Really?
I'd be willing to bet twenty-three, twenty-four. That's would be my guess.
Okay.
It's on their scope.
Yeah.
And they're working on it, but.
At least we're talking about it now.
The state, they don't move as fast as.
The, uh, the new tractor supplies coming along?
Poured slab today, didn't they, Tony?
Yes, sir. They were out there, um, uh, smoothing out the slab this afternoon. Um, J J and I went out there. They wanted us to come out and take a look as they were flushing the line for the fire suppression.
System and also for the building hookup for the fire guys. And we, uh, they pressured up the gas line that they put in, and those were both good. And, uh, they've been, they've been real good about keeping in touch with us and, and, uh, they're staying on, on track.
Do they plan to connect the two, and tractor?
That's, that's, last I heard, they, they are, they're working on trying to get that set up and then also plan for if anybody goes in behind them as well.
Hmm. Yeah. You know, you, you go out and you look at slabs and you're like, oh, that's not very big now. You go out there and you look at that slab, that's a big slab. It was so big that they, you know, you see those guys walk behind with, I don't know what the machine's called, but it smooths out the concrete.
Yeah.
This guy was riding on, uh, back and forth to cross it.
Yeah.
Started doing that concrete at three o'clock this morning.
Is that when they started?
Oh, is that when they got started? Yeah, I don't know. We, we got out there, it, the entirety of it was poured and they were smoothing it, and we went out there at like one-thirty, so.
I understand that they started moving concrete at three o'clock this morning.
I would not be surprised.
And I bet you they didn't stop till at least mid-morning.
The big, big, the big pumper thing left at noon. So, anyway, that's good progress. That all?
It's all I got.
Tony?
Okay, um, October started with forty cases open. Uh, Terry opened twenty-eight new cases, closed forty-four cases, so that left us with twenty-four cases at the end of the month. Four annual notices were sent out and, um, we had about two thousand dollars of fines paid and three hundred dollars of fines set out in jail. And nineteen hundred dollars of the fines paid go along with the three hundred that was sat out, same person. Um, and we are still, um, trying to help them realize it's much cheaper if they go ahead and bring it into compliance, but we're still working with the individual. Um, total fines for the month, uh, two thousand three hundred and twenty-two. And we had a lien paid, uh, two hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-seven cents, and that was paid by an individual that bought a property on Garvin, East Gar- or, or on Garvin, uh, in Basset. It was one that Terry had been working for High Weeds and Grass, and I guess it had been, um, went back on taxes. And the individual bought it up and they're bringing in, in, into compliance, so. With that and, um, as far as code, that's all I have for that, for, um, new stuff going on with us. We've, uh, last week we did a final on one of the one stories out at, um, um, the townhomes. Tomorrow at ten o'clock, I'm going out to do a final on the other one story. And all that's left of what they got going on is the two stories, which they are getting close to having those buttoned up as well. And then they'll have, be able to start putting people in all those. And then after we get done with, um, annexing and zoning stuff, then they're going to be going ham on the next bit.
Tony? Did you say that the three hundred dollar fine, they set out in jail?
Yes, sir.
But they also paid nineteen hundred dollars?
They paid that after they sat out. Yes, sir.
They set up the first three hundred.
They set up the first three hundred and that got old pretty quick.
Yes, sir. They found it was a lot. Yes, sir, they found it was a lot more fun to be out and about in the world.
I just want to make sure that's what I understood.
Yes, sir.
Chief Hallam?
Uh, we continue to, to do well. Uh, not pat me on the back, pat me apart on the back. Uh, these stats are with one and a half guys out. I had one guy out with knee surgeries on my duty, Joyner was being a new dad, so he was out half the time. So with one and a half guys out, we had a hundred and seventy-five citations issued and four hundred and forty-three warrants, uh, which I think is going to be our highest time. We had twenty arrests with fifty-six charges on those twenty arrests. Uh, you can see, uh, we had a list of spruels certified, uh, on our animal control stuff. McDade certified as radar instructor, so we don't have to go out and find the radar instructor when we need, when we need to be certified. Katie did her K nine certification with, sailed through that, uh, with just flying colors. Uh, Buck, our dog, who was McDade's dog, uh, surprised just him to go by and just bite McDade when he sees him because he loves Katie so much. Uh, but, uh, no, he's still. Got McDavid Wilson to do a sex offender registration. Now, this'll, this'll go to Roma's heart on, on Halloween, we handed out four hundred and seventy-five glow sticks. I mean, we just, uh, we were handing them out just to, till they ran out of kids. We sat there till we ran out of kids, no, no issues for Halloween. Uh, we did get, I've been waiting to tell you guys this, but we did get our forty-seven thousand gr, uh, dollar grant uh, from the governor's office for upgrading their computer stuff, so that's money that's not coming out of the taxpayer or y'all's pocket. I know JJ gets a little concerned when I start talking about money stuff because he, he thinks I'm going to want him to make a, write a personal check. Uh, but, uh, with forty-three building checks on top of the two hundred and forty-two costs per service, so when you, when you add those back in there, it's like two eighty-five. But I, I think it's important that the, the business people know that we're doing that many business checks, you know? And we do them at churches, we do them different things. The other thing, uh, was we had, uh, we had an issue potentially that was going to be at the Millsap football game. Uh, if you went to it or if you went by there, you saw that there was a parking lot full of police cars that was lined in front of it and everybody I talked to said, man, you guys made a statement. I said, yeah, we were going to make a statement because there was thirty Cossacks that were over behind docks. Uh, they were kind of circling around like buzzards and stuff and I guess they decided they didn't want to mess up, so. I think we had the, we had enough numbers to impress potential problems. Uh, the athletic director for Millsap took the time to write a letter to Dr. Cochran, uh, thanking him and the coaching staff for their, um, you know, their courtesy and, and assisting them during that whole, that whole deal and also complimented law enforcement members there as well.
I reached out to their city manager and we talked for a while, and she was very appreciative of how we handle things here.
Oh, Nate, Nate Lutter, that was very, very well done.
Yes.
Yes, sir. And I went out and talked to Ms. Hogg, uh, uh, just to let her know that we would figure something out with the barricades. Uh, but I told her that, understood her position. I said, but if the ribs, ribs or, uh, rip vest completely fails, I doubt I'd get fired over that. I said, but if there's some kind of vehicular attack, I could get fired over that. And she reminded me that if it did fail, that she would get fired on that deal. So we're trying to work out some kind of, some kind of compromise on those barricades where she and I both aren't defunded at the same time, yeah.
Bivin' on Joe, he lives down there.
Yeah, yeah.
Gets out of hand, it's his fault.
Well, it just, I don't think it was fine, I think it was fine there until he parked the dirt in a ladder truck down there.
I kind of liked it, I kind of liked it.
He's tired of walking up and down the stairs.
And it begins.
Yeah, anything else?
No, sir, that's it, thank you.
Anything else for the chief? Chief Williams?
All right. Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, thank y'all, uh, we had fantastic October, we were super busy, a lot of activities. Um, and, uh, you can see there was one of our busiest call volume months. We made eighty calls, uh, for the month, it put us above two and a half calls a day. Fifty-four took place within the city, with twenty-four we answered outside into the county. Uh, and on two of those incidents, we assisted other jur, other of our, um, friends in, in the county assisting them. We installed three smoke detectors. Um, we would still like to see that number go up, but the smoke detector program is still alive and, and doing. Um, and, uh, so we installed three, uh, we made sixteen calls for service after ten o'clock uh, at night and before seven in the morning. Um, and so this year, uh, this month, we had, uh, we didn't attend any house fires, so, um, you know, prevention is a, is a hard data to capture. So hopefully our smoke detectors are out there giving the homeowners early warning and, and we're not being, having to call to mitigate and the problems are being solved early. And that's, that's the whole, uh, uh, advantage and benefits of that program. Well, we did attend one small grass fire again. The, uh, climate has been very good to us, uh, for our, um, uh, wildland and grass fires. We just haven't attended very many of them and the ones we have were able to make instant, make location uh, quick enough that we were able to keep them pretty much contained before they become news worthy. Um, I did attend, uh, a, a Texas Communal Fire Protection Meeting this month and the Texas Forestry Service, uh, has beginning their forecasting, La Niña conditions for the winter. Uh, so we're, uh, kind of starting to focus in the near future that we, they are predicting higher winds and drier climates through the winter. Um, so those, uh, all this vegetation that has been, uh, well, uh, moisture and growth is now going to be turned to fuel and it, it's, it's going to happen at some point, uh, as the climate change. But right now, we're in good, we're in good shape on that, but we are prepping for, uh, the winter. We assisted the, uh, medicals, medic services thirty-four times and we attended thirteen motor vehicle accidents. Um, and thirteen times we assisted the public in some type of non-emergent event, just to call for assistance, we go out and, and help. And we had nineteen firearms, uh, false firearms and, uh, investigations. Those include smell of natural gas, fire燎 down and that. So it kept us busy along with, uh, we had our, uh, the rip vests we attended in the beginning of the month with the open house, um, and then, uh, our, uh, we, we do fire prevention month. Uh, it's really fire provincial week, we, we take advantage of it as much as we can. And then, uh, we handed out the candy and also got to participate with the community in that on Halloween. So with that, the, the members of the fire department, we had voted and kind of put into place, and I believe I've discussed it in here, our Citizens Fire Academy, that was planning to take place in November, but due to all the activity, uh, we kind of took a break. We had a lot going on, uh, with also with some other projects and stuff going on. So we've, we have decided to move that into the spring. So that'll kind of give us some activity to integrate with the community, uh, as we go around into the next year. Um, so some of the projects that you, we saw in the PowerPoint in last month, we've, uh, been able to accomplish those, some of those, uh, with a tremendous amount of person hours from our volunteers, uh, contributing some labor and some hard work and we got some good stuff done. The city manager came in and took a look at it today and I hope you're satisfied with those projects in the way they turned out. Uh, right now ladder six is in Denton, uh, at the Pierce, uh, maintenance facility. Uh, it's just getting the annual, um, maintenance and prevention for the aerial ladder uh, and making sure that we're staying on top of, of, of that. So that's it, you're noticing there's a vacancy, uh, in the station right there, ladder six. Uh, I spoke with them today, a lot of good news back and forth on the little projects they're working on. So we, it, we, we shouldn't be too much of a delay and we'll have ladder six back in service, back in, uh, serving the, the community. Uh, our, our fire department is doing the twenty-five days of Christmas. Um, we've got about two weeks left on that and the drawings will begin on December first, uh, for twenty-five of those drawings. And, uh, a, all winners will return back to the, to the, to the hopper, you get, you continue to go. So we appreciate your, any support on all of that from the community. Um, I've also, I've had some communications with Tex dot. I believe the title for the person I've visited with, it's been two or three, um, is an engineer. Um, I'm trying to address to Tex dot the importance of, 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 of installing warning device systems in front of the station. Uh, we don't have a lot of markings denoting, uh, that a fire station exists right there on that property in that middle of semen. Um, and so being that it's a Tex dot highway, we don't have a lot of authoritative jurisdiction to provide that. We're dependent on them. Uh, I've been involved with some projects in the past, uh, where Tex dot has come in and, and so we're looking at, um, trying to get some warning device systems, uh, to kind of improve the, uh, uh, to, to prevent any possible accidents that could happen there. So what we're seeing is when we, when we depart the station, the first vehicle approaching sees the apparatus and yields. It's the vehicles in behind them that don't understand why somebody's stopping in the middle of the road for no reason. So we, we just, I'm, I'm, I'm talking with Tex dot about what their options are to provide us some of that early warning devices. And, uh, like I said, I do have some experience on it and, and they're aware. So we're hoping to get some improvements again, it might not be immediate, but it's, at least we're planting the seed uh, to get some stuff in the future. And, uh, again, if we, the community would, uh, like us on our Facebook page, we put out a lot of, uh, public safety announcements in our activities and we appreciate it.
And Sky Warren?
What's that?
We're looking at planning our Sky Warren deal for the.
I applied for three classes today, those will be in, uh, twenty twenty-two, uh, January, February, and then I'm going later in February, they ask you to apply for three and you get, they'll choose one for you. So we did send in that application today for the Sky Warren class in twenty twenty-two.
On ladder six, how long has it been? Governor, how long will it be out of commission, I guess is?
It left Monday of last week. Uh, they've got all the maintenance done and everything. Uh, there's just, I think, two or three little projects. I didn't get a good forecast, I wanted to be back, but, um, I, my interpretation of our conversation was that they were going to be on it. Uh, the, the estimate came back at about ten thousand six hundred and we carved it down to about fifty-five hundred and we, we just, so they're attacking those projects that we approved.
Okay, is that an annual inspection or a two-year, or do you have to send that up there to be?
There, so there are different inspections for the aerial ladder, uh, like there's a monthly, there's an annual, there's a, a, a five-year, and so, um, they are going, uh, they're, they're doing the full, complete one-hundred percent maintenance and, uh, on every, every inspection and maintenance that is to be done is being done on that ladder.
Okay, but when we, when we do maintenance and have to send it off, how often is that? Y'all don't, y'all don't send it off monthly, everything?
No, no, the monthly is in-house, there's a, there's an in-house inspection that can be done.
So when do you have to send it off?
It, they, they recommend annually, every two years is, is. The, the, uh, ladder six probably will not go more than every other year because of the hours it accrues. It, it, we don't accrue as many hours as, um, a, a, a ladder that would serve a larger volume of, of runs.
Okay, I didn't know that.
So, so we would be, every other year is a safe approach for us to, to have the cables adjusted, the pads replaced, the, the, the filters cleaned and everything that's going on now.
Anything else for Chief Williams? Thank you, y'all appreciate you, thank you very much. Municipal court, jurors, anybody have any questions about some municipal courts?
I'll leave for adjourn.
Second. Got a motion from Zach and a second from Cecil to adjourn. Any other discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same time. Thank y'all very much.